I just saw the planning commission to order this Thursday, October 5th, two thousand twenty-three, and the time is six oh one P M. Want to do a roll call vote, starting with Ken, roll call.
Ken Lehman here.
Mike Capper's here.
Lane Belter here.
Dan Bonas.
And if anybody joins.
Josh and Shyla are both on Zoom.
And Josh and Shyla are joining us by Zoom. Um, this thing, uh, Dave Warner, you by Zoom?
I don't think Dave's on Zoom from what I can see.
We need the September minutes.
Yep.
The meeting's ordered. Nobody's here for public comment.
I can get them right now.
Here, grab the minutes.
Yeah.
We can come back to the minutes, uh, go by, go down the new business possible recommendation, free plot of land, parcel one eight one dash four one one nine dash zero zero dash five hundred. One eight one dash four one one nine zero zero dash two hundred and one eight one dash four one one nine dash zero zero dash three hundred. Applicant is Capstone Homes. Chuck, you want to start us out with your, um, with your review of Pine Vale preliminary plat- plan and review?
Yes, yes, just one second here, um. I don't know if you want to walk through every comments, but the bottom line is, um, you know, they, they submitted this, this preliminary plat- land along with a, uh, the surface water management ma- plan to look at the stormwater. We have several questions and some several requests for additional information, so our review is not done yet on that. And, and stormwater impacts, you know, can affect the, uh, you know, the final plant and the easements and everything else because of ponds have to be, you know, adjusted, made bigger or smaller, different configuration or whatever, you know, that, that has a likely impact on the plant, so. We have some work to do, you know, we wouldn't, you know, the bottom line is, you know, they're not considering preliminary flat approval until your, your November meeting. So this will be back in front of you. You know, you, next month and you can make a recommendation then, okay?
So do we even need to table it?
No, no, I, I would, I would look at it and get some feedback because, you know, if you have some concern, let's get them out, you know, in address now as opposed to, you know, a month from now because they don't want to get, you know, they, they brought it forward early just so they can get some, press some feedback.
Okay.
That sort of thing.
So could somebody help me where, uh, Pine Vale is?
Oh, yeah, so, uh, it's basically north of one ninetieth.
Do you know where?
Or, or you don't, can you know where my shop is?
No, I don't actually. North, Northview Service Center, kind of, if you look straight out your driveway, where the?
You got the parking.
Car, uh, auto repair shop?
Yeah, right there, yeah.
Yep, that's his place at Northview Service Center.
Oh, alright, other corner, oh, okay.
So if you look to the north, it's a property to the north of you.
Okay. So, so just some, some of the little background on it, is the village owns the land, current.
Okay, bought it like six, seven years ago?
Long, oh nine.
Oh nine?
Yeah.
Oh, that was long time ago.
And, and they bought it because they were running out of industrial land at the time.
Okay.
But the land really isn't suitable for industrial, you know, in industrial buildings, you want big buildings, flat.
Flat land.
Flat land, right? And this is just lovely rolling hills with a lot of land, a lot of basins, trees and, you know, what have you. And so it's just been, you know, you, you, the village purchased it, but, you know, it's just been sitting idle, not collecting any taxes, not, you know, anything, just sitting idle.
So what were the plans that we were going to do with it? Besides the industrial, so that won't be a workout, so?
Basically, you know, get it on the tax rolls by, you know, working out a financial arrangement and, you know, basically selling it.
So selling it to a develop- developer later?
Yeah, cash flow, yeah, yeah. So we still own it? They haven't purchased it from us yet?
Yeah, yeah, they, you want to say they purchased, they haven't closed on the property yet.
Okay.
They're in their due diligence, this is their due diligence, sixty, sixty day due diligence.
And then there's some.
Cause they're not going to buy it unless, you know, if we reject, the buyers aren't going to buy it.
Yeah, that's pretty fair.
None of some kind of incentive per lot sold that the village gets some of the money at each lot sold?
Yeah, we return, uh, fifty-five hundred dollars, I think it is, at occupancy at each lot to offset the price of the property. Exclamation costs are getting into the fourteen millions of this.
Yeah.
Oh, wow. Um, so they couldn't cash flow this, we couldn't cash flow this. So the only way was some assistance with the village and the public private partnership, so this does cash flow pretty well, um, real well. So we take it from basically a zero valuation right now, hundred thirty-five homes and, you know, four twenty-five, four fifty range, sixty million dollars, so. That'll be, that'll be released in the tax roll once we clap, uh, close this tid, which we would close fairly quickly unless we had some new projects within that. So this is now tid six. Tid six is also some additional lands, um, you know, across the highway from Dan, there's some, there's some land that maybe that property owner wants to do something with the county pit is another area that, you know, there's a reclamation there and they, you know, we're abandoning that in the, in the near future, which I don't think they're going to do, but in case they were to do that, we would have some additional building.
Behind the county shop?
Yeah, yeah, I don't think that's going to happen in ten years. What kind of home building are they going to build? Um, um, so there'll be two-story condos and then some ramblers, so a variation of our homes. Um, you know, so your walkout, your lookout, modified walkout, split entry, rambler. So those are the variations.
So, so, yeah, so I mean, if the planning commission was to say, you know, we want just eighty, eighty-four wide lots, you know, I would probably put this sale in jeopardy, I don't know.
Yeah, so the hundred thirty-five houses come into a both favor for the village and for them because the more houses they would put in there, the more, obviously, it's more profitable for them. They need to turn twenty-five percent of the profit on this, as every home builder does, so when you develop, they look at the end and if the home builder can't return, uh, initial return on investment is a twenty-five percent base loan finance, so. Those slight variations in there. So they had, they had said that, I had to verify that it was true, um, in speaking with the lending agencies, that is very true. They, they said, oh, we're pretty strict on, on rate returns and it needs to be there in their books, so. That hundred thirty-five is also, uh, you know, some of the comments on lot sizes, so that's small because there are some topography issues in the gradient. Um, the road is a thirty-two back-to-back curb, which does function well. A lot of their developments in the cities are under that and there's no restricted parking, so that was, so maybe we'll try, and if we do have problems, we can visit that later.
Yeah, the, the street sections are in the back of the plan, so on page sixteen there, yeah, that's where you can see there, thirty-two back there.
The other piece of this too, um, is we're pretty sensitive about trying to keep as many trees as possible. It's really challenging with the amount of excavating that's going on. Um, so they're building in a true replacement plan as part of this as well. Uh, but they are saving a pretty significant amount of, of land, we have a pretty good chunk of green spaces in areas, Outlot B, Outlot, uh, excuse me, Outlot six, five, seven, three, two. You know, lot one, there's a significant amount of trees that are going to be retained there and then their tree replacement plans.
Untraveled or anything?
Yep, so trails work on the east side of Street A, continue to the east on Street B. If you go to your first page, that header page, it's probably easiest to follow, that gray line to the right of Street A.
These are trails or sidewalks?
These are trails.
Okay.
Yep, and so it goes north, cuts to the east on Street B, falls through Outlot two, continues to the north through Outlot three and then will terminate up in Outlot four. Um, then sidewalk is on the interior of Street A after you get past Street B and that turns into sidewalk.
But no sidewalk on Street B, C, or C, D?
He, he, that's being proposed now on C, F, or D, yeah.
Sidewalk or trail, correct?
How will that work for like kids walking down the street?
Um, yeah, it's, it's definitely something we went back and forth on.
Don't they typically want sidewalk in, on at least one side of the street?
That's something we proposed a while ago that we wanted to pursue with every single street or in all of Somerset.
Some of our side streets we haven't proposed, um, like if we got to where Outlot four is on the top, we don't have anything projected there. Um, but Street D certainly is one that we taught quite a bit about adding. Um, just because this, this upper quadrant up here, where lots forty-four, forty-three are, the trail's fairly close, so there's now a whole lot of time to get from the house to the trail, that'll play.
Yeah, the first people walking, yeah, right? Well, what happens? What happens when there's a development on the north side of this and no sidewalks?
That's the hope, that there will be another development.
Right.
Yep.
That's why don't we want sidewalks going in from the start and trying to, cause trying to get them in later on these small lot sizes would probably be very challenging, right?
No.
To put sidewalks in later?
It's still the, the, the right of way, well, it's whatever, you know, whatever you guys, that's why we're here tonight, it's what you guys suggested.
Really, man, but the sidewalks in right of way, you don't want people walking in the streets.
I like sidewalks right of way, or, I mean, if it's the problem with width of street and the lot sizes, since this is a, you know, self-contained development kind of thing, could a lot of the streets somehow be turned into one ways?
We, we have sixty-six feet already.
Oh, so we have plenty, okay.
Yeah, it's just looking out for redundancy where now people aren't using the sidewalk because well, the trail obviously is the trail, right, this sidewalk. So that was one of the, one of the pieces on the Street F especially. But now you can make the argument that, yeah, the new development to the north, which someday probably will happen. But, you know, we want a connection there.
Just all the kids and all those homes that have to get to the path, have to get to the trails.
Um, yeah, street lights?
Street lights, yeah, not on this plan, but, uh, final plan.
So where would you like to see sidewalk then?
So we only have it on Street A for now, right? And then the trail goes on Street B, and then you said they need an easement to get from Street B to Lot Two?
There's, there's two segments that are listed at future in this plans.
So right now they can't, there's no way they could not?
So if you look at that, that temporary cul-de-sac at Lot B, you can see there's a gray trail that connects into a darker trail?
That's an eight.
I call it a B too.
Oh, what did I say? Well, Street B, eight.
And your glasses.
Oh, Street B, okay.
So, so you can see there's a, a lighter shade of gray there on, uh, along eight and then it goes darker.
Yeah.
That's, they have as listed as future currently. And then if you look up where Outlot three is to the north, you can see along that, the property edge there, there's a, a grayer section there that goes all the way up. Well, it's basically Outlot four, all the way up to the north property line.
For the future trail.
For the future trail, and I think, you know, my recommendation was to build that trail now, just so it's there, why not?
Yeah, and they're, well, I mean, they're going to have all the trailer already and they're so easily.
It's not going to go in.
They would need an easement.
You know what I mean?
But if I was talking to that landlord, I would say.
Cause it's not going anywhere.
You don't give the easement, you know, you'll have to pay for it later when it's built.
Yeah, you want the easement now.
Give it, give the easement now so you don't have to pay for it, or whoever you sell that land to had.
And who owns it to the east?
I mean, um, I think, hey.
At this point, I want Outlot three as Larry Mondor. So I'm sure they're, I'm, I'm sure they want the trail to connect to, and I'm sure they're working on that, but they don't, they don't want to show something that, you know, that, they don't, they don't have yet, right?
Well, otherwise is the option to slide everything to the west a little bit so they have room to put that?
I mean, you know, they could, one option could be that they, you know, that they.
It would compress the lots, yeah.
Well, how wide a trailer are we talking about?
Eight to ten. And then the other piece of that is they're, they're unsuccessful, the suggestion then was to just do a, a, a smaller sidewalk or a temporary, you know, so they can still access. It would be a street approach, so I don't know that it would impact things all that much.
Most like cement biking roads or biking trails are what, four, five feet wide? Why, why would that have to be eight, or you're saying side to side?
Yeah, malt, malt baggers are, be, minimum was a minimum of eight?
Minimum of eight, ten.
Put the paved areas five, what are you saying?
No, that, the concrete sidewalk is five, 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 or asphalt.
But if you got a bike path, come on with, you have bikers and walkers, you need more.
Yeah, yeah.
Eight or ten, five.
Multi-use band, yeah.
Eight is kind of tight even, but, I mean, it's just a minimum of a lot.
But I, I think we still want the easement north of Outlot three. If the trail didn't go in for a number, a few years on the road, it's, but easement's got to be there so that we're ready to.
Well, they're saying we need easements for this area and this area right now from Larry Mondor to, in order to put the trails in. Am I correct on that, Chuck?
Not all the trails.
Right, but just, uh.
The graded sections they would need.
Just the, the light, right, light.
Yeah.
Things that we need.
I'm just curious why, because it looks like it's within the border.
Well, cause the grading, that, you know, the land is.
Because, because of, because of land.
Land is such that it drops on.
Okay.
So if we, if we tried to grade it there, that would affect him too?
Yeah, you would encroach on it, I see.
That makes sense, thank you.
Yeah, but it's pretty mine, I mean, it's pretty mine, I hope, hopefully they'll work.
Does anybody?
Cause it's, it's, it's been a contract, you know, it's, it's a benefit, it's mutually beneficial.
Don't know the outcomes, so it's, I, I mean, that trail goes in, his property value goes up.
Yeah, and like you said, they just wouldn't want to commit to that on this, even though they're probably thinking the same thing we're thinking, why not get it done right away?
Yeah.
But on this first preliminary plat, yeah, why commit to something like that? Takes a little more work. Your other question?
I don't want to speak for them.
Right, but that, that makes sense. Your other question about where the sidewalks would be? I would think every street that doesn't have trail should have sidewalk, although I'm looking at Street E, which is just a cul-de-sac.
And the cul-de-sac on Street G too.
Right, so into the cul-de-sac, I don't suppose you'd really have to have it, but up to the cul-de-sac.
Okay. And then, uh, again, to, to get the, the numbers to work, you know, they would like, they're requesting sixty-five foot.
Okay, so why did we and how did eighty become the standard that we set as this is what it's got to be?
That's our one.
Yeah, but why, why eighty, why not seventy-eight, and if you can go seventy-eight, why not seventy-five, so why eighty?
You were probably on the plan commission when that was changed.
Yeah, and I would have just said, yeah, go along with it, cause people, but.
Eighty's fairly standard for our one and across the board, sixty-six is really an anomaly. And you don't see it other. And that's why we need provision for plan unit development, so you could offer an option for narrow lots.
So to have our nice wide standard?
Yeah.
With the opportunity to narrow it down if we had, so do we see any problem with going down to sixty-five?
The planners will tell you that the trend is smaller lots, larger houses is what people want. They don't want to mow the yard as much apparently as the baby boomers and us Gen Xers did. You know, uh, that's just, that's, that's what's attractive, you know?
Exactly, that's what, that's what, you know, we look at the, twenty-five, thirty years younger than us.
Yeah.
They don't even want to be outside. Younger, younger people don't want to do any of that stuff.
Most of the walks we take and bikes around that we go, we don't want to see people, they're just not outside, but, okay, that, and I, I get that true. In this kind of development, that still remains? Cause this is just beautiful topography, beautiful land, beautiful, beautiful, which also makes lawn mowing a hassle, but they don't want a larger yard as well?
No, I mean, you're creating larger flat areas and things that are usable, and it's just really tough to do on a site like this.
The lot size.
Well, that's what we have a good white sap, that's what may be in development.
That's the same thing, you've got eighty-foot lots and sixty-five-foot lots.
Okay.
So it's kind of the same product that, you know, that Capstone was contemplating up there.
What type of restrictions on this? Uh, with, with the homes fencing, you know, different things, uh, what they can do as far as homeowners? Is there any type of restrictions and any of that?
No, let's say, I'm onto the throw covenant on top of.
I'm, I'm just asking.
They might, I mean, the village does, we do it as a village.
Okay, I'm just, I'm just asking.
If you want a fence, you got to get a fence permit, but the developer might want to put covenants on it.
Okay, okay, now, outside storage building.
Sometimes create that hole, sometimes.
I think your parents put that on.
Yeah.
Oh, we lived on Wall Street, there was a development across the street that, uh, the homeowners had to pay a fee for the streetlights. It was interesting.
Well, they really were outside the city, so, yeah, somebody had to pay for it.
Yeah, so, you know, sometimes there's, you know, they'll put in monuments or something like that and then the homeowners associated.
I just don't want to be coming into the development and, you know, it doesn't look good, right? I mean, so, you know, pretty soon it turns into a junk pile and, you know, just.
And, and these will be at a price point where they don't want junk piles, you know, they want good products and.
But I agree with the trees, you know, leave those trees alone, uh, not take them down and, uh, cause that will really help with the, the way the development looks.
Yeah, right there, but you've, you've, you've got to walk up there and see there's going to be a.
That's why I have to, I have to get up there, yeah.
There's almost hundred degree, hundred feet changes in elevation.
Good.
I think most new developments that are requiring five to six trees get planted on each lot.
What's your ordinance say now, two, or is that what's changed to two?
Yeah, two plus whatever fifty feet on the boulder, so essentially three.
I'll try to look at it.
Don't get lost in there.
Yeah.
I just need to set my eyes on it, I just need.
What are you gonna?
He's in my time cover.
Yeah, you might not see you again, we need your planning commission.
If I didn't have a highway there, I would have been, well, I, and I got a good sense of direction and I'm like, I don't know where I am. Cause you had to walk with your head down.
It has to stop. So we can still get sidewalks in there though?
Yeah, that's our answer.
But the lot sizes and the variations that they're asking is, same thing we've already said yes to on their other developments, so that's not others.
And, and what point do we grant it, do we call it a planned unit development, cause it's usually listed on here? Yeah, that was the, the piece that we were, so the sixty-five foot right now does not imply what our lot size. So there's two things, we change it to read sixty-five, or we give them a variance to go like we did here, we give them a variance. I'm a big fan of variances, so either we look at changing it or we're actually kind of a, the norm of, of sixty-five. I still don't know how I got to sixty-six, I was wondering in my head if there was a big argument at the plant commission and someone said sixty-five and they said, no, it's too small, and they negotiated on sixty-six, just to make a point, I don't know.
All right, let's match the right of way with, you know, I don't know.
I don't know, I don't remember, not a clue.
Well, I thought it was eighty.
It's sixty-six.
Or the.
For P U D.
For P U D.
Yeah. For P U D, we have it at sixty-six.
Yes.
Plus the new.
I bet it was me, that, that's really.
So, so that's ended up the change to sixty-five, which is actually the logical thing to do.
Is that what it put in?
Yeah. Which is a logical thing to do as long as I can say.
So that would, uh, go for the planning commission first and then get approved by the board?
Yeah, and I guess that, that's up for debate, if what we want to do is go with a variance and leave the ordinance alone or change your ordinance to sixty-five, I just feel like it's going to keep coming and, oh, it's sixty-six and.
So if we give a variance, we can give a variance for, and as we for each lot or for this whole development?
Uh, variance for the development.
Next question, if Capstone probably would have been aware that we're at sixty-six, why would they ask for sixty-fives?
I think they misunderstood that we were at sixty-six.
Okay, because our sixty-six is an oddity.
Yes, just like the speed limits, you know, in this town, it's, it's fifty-six. And we're all, it's fifty-five, it's kind of what I mean, it's.
Yeah, we, we just have a very strange thing compared to everybody around.
You go through planning books and it's.
Well, let's change that, how do we do that?
Just ordinance change. It went simple. What about inside the cul-de-sacs, because there, you have cul-de-sacs, is there something separate, some of these cul-de-sacs are fifty feet?
Going back into the right of way.
Yep, so is that, do we account for that somewhere else? Yeah, cul-de-sacs are screwing, because you get, you get a wedge.
Where, where are we looking at the cul-de-sacs?
If you look, uh, page four, if you look up towards the top, Street E, the one cul-de-sac is fifty-eight, one's fifty-one, you know, it's fifty-one, so they're not meeting the sixty-five, if we change it to sixty-five, that's not meaning sixty-five foot.
But they might.
It's usually measured at the setback, so that.
Oh, so it's measured at the setback, so that, but do we need to know that? Or in, in the long run, so we can offer, or, I'll put a, put a variance on here? Do we need to see those measurements is what I'm saying before we approve the, the American, the American flat?
Yeah, I mean, it's not, they don't specifically listed at the setback, but we can, uh, we can measure that, I can, I can verify what they got there.
Okay.
It should be close, I mean, it should be, and a lot of times you'll see like fifty-foot in cul-de-sacs just because of a, you know.
But I'm more than, we have something in our ordinance that, that, that explains that.
We can clarify it, yeah, yeah.
I, I agree, I mean, it's, the cul-de-sacs are, like, boughs are screwing, so if there's, that, so if that doesn't, the cul-de-sac doesn't meet the frontage requirement, but you've got something in, in your ordinance, you know, cause it's going to be pie-shaped, could make up for it back.
Is the setback at second line?
So just I'm all, it looks like it's probably, it probably meets at sixty-five.
You have a really good trained eye.
Yeah, that's what I'm thinking of, yeah, I guess if you look at enough of these.
But I can verify, I can verify, you know, it's.
Well, actually, if I look at, if you look at a different lot, though, I'm going to say you're right.
Yeah, it's a schedule fault.
Sixty-six here, yeah, but same, he's got a pretty trained eye.
That's what I'm saying, I, I didn't even question right from the start, so I'm thinking, if you look at a thousand of these a day, eventually you just start seeing things like that. That's not where I am.
I can't see where, but I can see.
Too, he's got his plan zoomed in.
Oh, see. Probably with one of those goggle things that golfers use to tell exactly.
You know, you know, a lot of my comments are like related to deep in the manhole, put the valve here, not there. You know, that you probably don't really concern yourself with, you know, Bob does and I do, but, uh. Um, other things I wanted to point out to you is, uh, what was it? You know, just so you know, I re, get reminded, you did get grant funding to put a trail down one ninety. And that'll come in after this development, cuz that's a, what is that, a twenty-twenty-five, twenty-twenty-six project? And, you know, I'm, you know, they're working, they wanna see this first phase of this development go in and next year.
Thirty-five to this development?
Past it. Yeah, to, you know, essentially to, well, no, to this development, cuz then there's the grandeur, there's a. You know, the grandeur comes up. Stops right there, so it would be presumably to the, where the, the grandeur trail ends.
So basically to the.
So there will be, has to be some coordination there and that, you know, then I'll have to be tied in and make sense, you know, that.
I guess personally, I'd like to see sidewalks and then if we can get it where they can. At least either get the easement to start to go from Street B to lot outlet, out of lot two. And then at least from next to lot thirty-nine for now.
Yeah.
Cuz if they have to slide everything over or what they would have to do or get the easement from Larry Mondo.
Yeah, to your point, mayor or president is that, uh, you know. You hate to have somebody buy lot eight and then all of a sudden. Five, ten years down the road, somebody's, you know, they start putting a trail next to his house and he's like, I didn't sign up for this.
Right. Right, better to have it beforehand and.
Cuz things similar to that have happened. The answer those people get then is, oh, buyer beware, it's, it's in the ordinances and you should have known, and which nobody knows. But, yeah, but who looks into it? I mean, so, yeah, it's nice to get.
Instead of having angry people, you, it's, they know in advance cuz it's already there.
We thought ahead, yeah.
And I like to advocate putting a future through-street sign up too, where you have these temporary cul-de-sacs. Cuz sometimes these temporary cul-de-sacs go away in forty years and no one remembers. Two years that, yeah, this was intended to be temporary. So if you, you have a permanent sign that says future through-street. Then.
On the end of.
Can't complain.
On the end of Street A and Street F, you're talking about?
Street A, G, B.
Everything that goes to the, everything that goes to the border of the.
Everything that doesn't have a cul-de-sac.
Well, it's basically everything to the, to the border of the development. So you can go to the next develop, the next developer can hopefully continue on.
Chuck, you wanna walk us through your letter, your right-hand agency letter?
Sure, so, you know, one again talks about that surface water management plan, two talks about the width. Uh, three talks about the area, and I don't know what the area, I didn't look at the PUD with the, you know, areas and that, but that's kind of goes along the line with the sixty-five.
That's.
But that's just the, uh, the acreages there. The smallest, the smallest lots in this development proposed is, uh, point two acres. So, I just wanted to point that out, you know.
What lot is that?
Um, well, if you just go through, maybe the smallest, the smallest ones are all up on Street G. You know, the thought was is that. You know, that, you know, smaller lots are a good transition if that land to the north was to go into, say, industrial. You know, it's nice to have that transition between the larger lots and then the, you know, the smaller lot, you know, and then different uses. So that's kind of a, their thought process there and it was similar, if, if you recall. Our, our office actually put together an original concept. That, you know, was loosely, it was very similar to this, but it had that same kind of higher density on the north end versus the rest of it.
You guys thought one, a concept one for housing?
Yeah, yeah, originally, just to, so you'd have something to mark, I would have something to market and say this is.
One seventeen, one eighteen, one nineteen.
Yeah, no, there, there's a number. Thirty-six to thirty-nine, thirty-six to thirty-four, forty-four, forty to forty-four, so they're all at point two.
Can, can we all agree that we don't have a problem with sixty-five feet with this development? Is that kind of a barrier?
Yeah.
Not by a value, it, it's gonna be, it's only, it's gonna be a PUD, isn't it?
Right.
In the long run. So I mean, we're creating another PUD which we have.
We created, we just do a.
But we're calling it a PUD, are we? In the long run. It's gonna be a PUD. We have, in my opinion. Quite a few PUDs in the village. I'd like to see a development come back to just.
Josh and Shyla, can you guys weigh in? Would you guys have a problem with the sixty-six, sixty-five foot lot sizes instead of sixty-six?
I don't have a problem.
Thank you. How about you, Josh? Are you there?
I don't either, either. I think you guys brought up some great points.
Okay, thank you. Okay.
So, comment four and five are just, you know. Just, just some click, you know, just cleaning up the plans a little bit. Again, there was.
As he's going through, are you able to put this up? So, would we be part of the YouTube?
I think so. But again, more, these are mainly just engineers, engineers saying, you forgot this dimension. You know, uh.
Things that we don't need to discuss.
Really, that, they really don't impact, I think, the overall intent of what you're doing. It's just right, more, uh, engineering sort of, uh, items. Uh, number seven, that just says, hey, coordinate with the trail project that's, you know, will be happening in subsequent years. Eight again, is it just deepening a manhole run? Nine is just moving a structure. Picking it, cuz right now they show it in a, in the maintenance path and you don't want. Open graded structure in a gravel path. So.
Quick question, uh, will these outlots be turned over to the village?
Yes.
That'll be part of the developers agreeing it then. And then, so that is once, once they're completed or once the certificate of document, when does that happen?
Once MSA would finalize the project, then that's part of our, our final release. Of, um, Florida credits is all those things are done. Or we don't release a lot of credit.
And what is the line of credit that they're putting up for the developer?
Like, no, it has to be a hundred and twenty percent of construction costs.
Yeah.
That piece of it.
So they share their construction cost with us once they get to that point. And then, you know, it's a hundred and twenty-five percent of security, that's what you read, for the, for the street stuff, so.
So there's a separate security on top of any investment we provide to them as well, cuz they wouldn't walk away from us.
We're sure how much is that or?
Uh, we'd have to wait for the construction cost to come back, right? So it could be.
When you said grading, it's like fourteen million.
Yeah, it could be a hundred and twenty, twenty percent of fourteen million, so.
Did they come up with a hundred and twenty percent of fourteen million as a?
Well, there's some bits of laws changed in Wisconsin now where you can't get security for outside the, the right of way. So that'll have all that grading. You can get security to finish everything up within the right of way, in the ponds, that sort of thing. But, you know, not the rest of it. And they've also allowed statutes change too, where you used to be able to require a letter of credit. But now they can provide a bond as security.
So another piece I'd like to. That should have mentioned was this three-phase, so one phase, two phase, and that fourteen million would encompass all of those. So the grading's gonna be done all in one phase. And as they move forward to house completions, they'll move into the sewer and water with phase two. And then the final phase, and those phases are expected to be all done within five years.
Do we know which ones phase one, two, or three?
So, going north.
Yeah, basically they have.
Some of the security be taken out of, you know, three divided by fifteen million, so five million dollars.
So the, you know, the intent of the security is, so, yeah, you can just finish up the, the roads and everything else.
Will the trails? Hello, sir? Will the, will the trails be part of the phase one, two, or three, or can the trails be done? When the grading is done? My apologies. No worries, welcome.
We're just walking through my memo. So if we get to, uh, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, and fourteen. We've already gotten your feedback. That's where the trails are and where they're not. And the recommendations, and I've already got your input as far as where you wanna see additional sidewalk. So.
So, and then say that back to us, so we're all on the same page.
So, the, uh. The, you want sidewalk on the streets with the exception of the, uh, segments that end in permanent cul-de-sacs. So like.
So Street B.
The, the west end of G and then Street E.
The west end of G. And when you say west end of G, you're saying like lot?
From west of D.
West of D, okay.
That's what I'm hearing, correct me if I'm wrong, but.
And then.
Street E, which is that cul-de, just to the south. In the middle of the interior, that's.
So not all the way down to Street G?
No.
To the path?
No, it would, Street G.
All of Street G.
It would go all the way to the east, but.
Yeah.
Um, how about the, so the sidewalk, I would think on Street G. Should probably be on the north side of Street G, then it could go all the way up to lot fifty-three. At least that way, anybody living in sixty could just quick jump across.
Generally, generally, you, you end them at intersections, you know, and then truncated domes and some of those things, so you can have people.
And I figured as much.
You don't really do that mid-block.
So, are you saying it would stop?
It would stop it.
You, you would have put it on both sides of Street G, right?
Only one side.
And are you saying along the one sixteen to one twenty lots then, and not even on the forties? Those are already very small lots anyway. Is that what you're thinking?
Well, the right of way is the same throughout the development, and these are.
Yeah.
Well, I take that back. Sometimes the, uh, the sidewalks fall. Yeah, they, they can fall within the right of way. So, you know, I guess we don't, that's kind of a design detail.
Yeah.
You know, that, what makes the most sense. We'd have to talk through there with their developer, engineer.
Cuz I can see why if it's on the south side of Street G, it makes sense to stop at Street D. But if the sidewalk is along the north side of Street G. You could run it all the way up to the cul-de-sac.
Just, just before the bomb?
Yeah, just, so up to lot fifty-three.
That's where I have a mark at fifty-four.
Okay, sure.
So, is that what we're talking about then? The north side of?
That's, well, see, that's what I'm saying, is Chuck was also saying that, that's really kind of a detail that gets worked out later. I'm just saying, if it were on the north side, it would make sense to go all the way to lot fifty-four. But if it's on the south side of Street G, then it would make sense to stop at up at one sixteen.
You know, not that it's right or wrong, but generally speaking, they just, they end them at intersections. And not the cul-de-sacs, just, you know.
Yeah.
You, you just don't have through traffic, and so you can walk safely to a cul-de-sac.
Agreed.
And, uh, and then, and then as, you know, as far as what side of the street is, you know, that, that'd be kind of looked down in design and what makes the most sense for their needs. And we'd review that, and you would have opportunity to re, you know, once they revise it. And they choose a side of the street, you would still have an opportunity to look at and say, uh, you know, we, you know.
That would be.
They can explain their logic and you can say your logic and, and.
And I see the logic on both of those, so, but that would be on the next preliminary plaque.
And we're saying one's right side of Street F and one's right of Street C?
Right, only on one side of, with, and they would kind of choose what makes most sense for them.
Yeah.
And then one side, well, Street B already has the trail.
Right, so it'd be C, G, F, D, C, D, F, G.
No E and then no cul-de-sac at G.
Fifty-five gets really challenging in fifty-six, so.
Because of.
Yeah, I don't, I don't picture any necessity or even desire to have sidewalk in the cul-de-sac itself, no way. And I agree, even leading up to it.
Fifty-six is in the left lane?
Developers don't like them on the upfront, you know, they don't like to put the cost in, but on the flip side of it, it sells houses better. Because people are like, oh, it's great, like it's gonna stay on the sidewalk all day, but around the street, those.
And so, you don't want kids walking down the streets. All right, what else you got?
So, again, uh, handicap ramps, uh, some. Uh, sixteen's just pointing out, and actually, this detail shows that, so that's not a big deal. Um, and then sanitary sewer run, we're just, again, that's engineering stuff, that seventeen's engineering stuff. Eighteen is, uh. Is engineering stuff. Uh, that. Nineteen is hydrant locations, twenty is valve locations. And again, you know, these are my recommendations. They might have good reasons. We, a lot of times we'll go back and forth on. Why they put it here and I want it there, and, and then usually I win, but sometimes I have points. And then the temporary dead-end roads, we, we talked about, uh. You know, having a. Barricades or through-street sign, that's number twenty-two. Uh, twenty-three is just putting the, uh, sanitary in the middle of the road as opposed to the wheel path. Which might require an extra structure, you know, but not a big deal.
Oh, I got you. Wheel path would be.
Like we drive down the road, you know, if we get it in the center of the rodeo, like the grandeur.
I try not to, but it gets the snow off your car.
And twenty-four, Bob likes Amer, Iron American Steel, just better quality, so. I know that's a good one.
Is that a manufacturer or is that?
It's not made in China.
I'd say zero products made.
No, I, I understand that, but I didn't know, but because it was capitalized, I thought that was that specific company.
It's a period.
So just a.
Yeah, it's just me.
Just saying American made.
They do all the castings.
Yeah, so I noticed that for you.
Yeah, the quality is just not there. Curbs stops and driveways, you know, just making sure that they're protected.
No secrets.
Uh, item twenty-six, there's just one lot that's five foot higher than its neighbor. We thought that should be softened, so. And, uh, twenty-seven is. Yeah, the trail's pretty steep there, and so if we can bring it more into compliance with eighty-eight.
So what is, uh, STA? One plus fifty.
Station, so that's. Yeah, that's how. So it's basically from the intersection, you generally is zero plus zero, zero, they'll say that's, then one plus fifty is a hundred and fifty feet. So that's just.
And then, so it's six plus?
Six hundred and fifty feet, so from one hundred and fifty feet from the intersection to six hundred and fifty feet from the intersection, so. And so you'll see that on the planned streets.
So you're trying to keep it below an eight percent.
Why don't they just say one hundred and fifty to six hundred and fifty?
So they can look smarter.
Right.
You know, it's, it's been done that way for two hundred years. Yeah, well, they tried to get the metrics and then you can have a whole. Yeah, well, they tried to get the metrics, and then you can have a whole thing. Different station. Uh, number twenty-eight is uh, just noting that. You know, that road coming into the development goes outside of, of the property that, you know, this village currently owns.
Oh.
Twenty-nine just talks about there's some backyards that are three to one, as opposed to, if we can get that to forty-one. You know, um, that's just, it's a, it's hard to know with three to one, right? Uh, and then that station ten fifty on street A.
So that's one thousand fifty?
Yeah. But you know, it all depends on where they start, zero plus zero, zero, or zero balls, you know, wherever they start that, it's, it's a thousand fifty from that.
Okay, it's a zero what?
Zero, zero plus zero, zero.
Are you talking?
Zero tractor ball. Yeah.
Zero.
Guess I didn't view it.
I don't know what that is yet, but I'm looking it up.
Zero plus zero, zero, so that's zero. Wherever they, wherever they started their.
Zero plus.
Their measure.
Zero, zero, wherever these, okay.
So if you look at the, the utility plans or the grading plans, you'll see the little one plus zero, zero, you'll see the two plus zero, zero, you'll see those.
Yeah, it's mostly construction, so if they say, we're having a problem at station one plus seventy-five, we all know where to work.
Yeah.
Oh, okay, we see what you're saying. All right, so if I'm looking at street A, what they, can I look at to see what?
So if you look at.
Zero plus zero is.
So if you go to the grading, let's see here.
Fourteen.
Well, I, we, look at like ten, if you wanna, maybe it's cleaner to look at that beginning. Or, or you wanna see street eight over that comment?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Um, so yeah, if you go to sheet eleven. Let's see.
Sweet A.
See, you see at ten fifty, right in front of one ninety-six there?
On page eleven?
Yeah, page eleven.
For one.
Lot one ninety-six there?
On the very left-hand side halfway up the page, okay?
Yep, and you can see, it, you know, it's kind of hard to see, but you can see eleven, you can see ten plus zero, zero, and you can see eleven plus zero, zero, right? You see those?
It's reading the.
Center line of the road there, on kind of both sides of one ninety-six.
The road.
Where the catch.
Oh, yeah.
Right, yeah.
See.
Street A.
Yeah.
So do you see eleven and you see ten?
Yeah.
Right in the middle of that would be ten fifty, right?
Oh, I see.
And you see how they have their drainage arrows, arrows pointing both towards ten fifty?
Percent? My, oh, I see.
Okay.
Okay.
So if you split the difference, that would be ten fifty, right, between eleven and ten?
But they even have ten plus fifty in there.
There's a little hash mark in between it, so you can see.
Yeah, but up above that.
Oh, yeah. Okay, yeah, the P E at the point.
Yeah.
So basically, the arrows are pointing towards like ten fifty as the low point, but their catch basin is actually like ten plus twenty. So my comment is just saying, you know.
Move it back.
Move it back, so that the low point is what their catch bases are. So again, it's one of those engineering things. They, they would do that design, but it was just, we saw it, so we noted it.
Thank you for that.
Cause the last thing you wanna do is get out there, and everybody's like, this is a brand-new road, why do we have a bird back here? Yep, so that's what we're trying to avoid. Uh, number thirty-one says, um, you know, there's some drainage swell that gets close to a house. So we're saying push that away from the house, the swell.
Chuck, where you come up with the, the lots two hundred and so?
Well, this is where it gets kind of confusing. So if you look at. If you look at their plat, those first couple pages.
Yeah.
They're all, it's one, it's zero through one thirty-five. When you get to the grading plan, it's, it's, it starts at a higher number. So the grading plan, the lots don't coincide all the way through.
Are they the same lots or different lots?
They're the same lots, but they just number them.
Number them different.
They number them different for the grading plan versus the plan. They explain to me why, and for life in the, I can't remember.
Yeah.
Why they like to do that.
You need to see your ear.
Yeah, it's just, it's one of those things that just helps them keep track of.
Mike, if you start off at zero balls, then it all makes sense.
For grading purposes, maybe, cause since, since it's that reason, it would make sense that they would consider some of the outlots probably to be lot-numbered.
No, they're just outlots.
Really?
Yeah.
It's called.
Even at gr- even at grading time.
It, I'll tell you, for me, that would be stupid.
To have.
It would make sense.
Have the numbers be different.
Have the numbers be different, I mean, it just generates confusion.
They explained it to Chuck, but Chuck doesn't remember.
Yeah, I, I'm trying to remember. I said, okay, that's why you do it. I, I get it now. And then to add further complications, is when they do the first phase and they actually decide where the blocks are.
Yeah.
You know, then you'll have what, you know, block one, lots one through ten, block two, lots one through ten, block three. Uh, you know, so, you know, that's, but they have to do that for the plat. You know, you have to, you know, you have to do that.
Basically, the good part is they add a, a one to everything for the grading, and so it's the same lot, just add a one to it.
Yep.
Lot twenty-five is lot one twenty-five, lot one oh nine is lot two oh nine.
Yeah.
So it's.
Um. And there's, there are a few areas with retaining walls as well. That's the comment, two ten.
One, two ten for the lot?
Uh, two oh eight, so then.
Oh, yeah.
Two ten of the grading plan shows the wetland, a lot eight, that's all retained, retaining wall. Did it? Cause those backyard's a little bad. Because of the topography, you notice there's just a piece of issues there.
So they put a retaining wall all the way around out lot eight?
Yep, they wanna bring up that to soften the topography down to the pond.
So out lot, okay.
I mean, interesting what's done.
Yeah.
Can we get, uh, can we say we would like fountains in any of these ponds?
Depends if they're little ample trade or not, and we don't know that yet.
Yeah. Oh, that's why there's a fountain up here?
You know, some of the ponds are wetlands, and some of the ponds are, you know, treatment ponds and things, so. Then somewhere, you know, you have to, you're required to infiltrate a certain amount, so it gets to be. And if you put a, put a fountain in it, then it's, you know, another thing for staff to maintain it.
Yeah, but they're pretty.
So for infiltrates, we can't put ponds, we can't put pumps on.
Yeah.
Cause it's, he keeps kicking up the son of a. So if they're landlocked and don't do.
It also keeps the shores nice and.
Yeah.
Keeps it from getting green or stagnant.
Yeah. And then my, my final two comments is, you know, just basically saying that, you know, that they need to obtain and provide the village all necessary easements, both permanent and temporary. And then that final comment thirty-four there, I just say prior to sub, prior to any grading, a pre-construction conference will be held between the something like, I'm saying, so. Um, you know, basically, we, we want everything in place before. You know, with my ground. Sometimes we do let them go through a grading permit and get started earlier, because there's endangered bats, they're pretty much all over America, and.
Brown bats.
The building inspector, the, you said it, Sam?
No.
I see him.
No. So what else did I, what did you catch up on that I didn't? No, I was actually kind of surprised over notes for, yeah. So, no, no, I got that, got that, got that, got that. But yeah, and, you know, thank you, thank you for bringing up the thirty-two feet streets, and you kind of do that. Yeah, we, we got as well. So that's, that's plenty wide, and that's, that's a trend, just like the houses is, cities are going a little bit narrow the streets, just, just because. You know, it's less impervious, so it's better for the environment, and it's cheaper to maintain and water for cities and villages.
I was going down the street last week in St. Paul, and there was cars parked on both sides of the road, and there was hardly enough room for one car to get through, and I'm thinking, how? How can they do this in the winter?
What, in St. Paul? The, the roads are bad anyways.
The roads are horrible.
Horrible.
Lots of big issues, and the garbage trucks can't get down them.
Yes.
They just tell people, you don't pull the block up, just wanna pick them up.
Oh, but as we found living on Spring Street, you throw a narrow street down and you can slow the people a lot, cause.
What was the street?
Spring Street is just a racetrack, and that's cause it is.
I'm like, there's no way you can fly, you know? But that coincides with a driver.
It's everybody.
Yeah.
And it's people I know that are respectful, wonderful people. You just need to show. It's hard to have both sides, it just looks like.
Anybody have any uh questions? They'll bring, Chuck, they'll bring uh changes or whatever back for next month.
Well, we'll.
You don't have to take any action or.
I mean, I, I guess I got your comments, I got that there's a consensus on the sidewalks. And uh.
And the sixty-five feet with a variance.
Yeah, with the setbacks, yeah.
A variance for this project, and we want to just keep the ordinance as is, you know?
I thought we thought that it would be better to change the ordinance to sixty-five, so we're in line with everything that everybody expects.
Yeah, I think that's a good idea.
Do we wanna put that in the next agenda?
Does that have to go onto an agenda item?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah, I think we should.
Yeah, we can't.
We require a.
Now, it's not on the agenda.
Well, fifty-five just makes someone.
Fifty-five, yeah.
Sixty-five.
Sixty-nine.
Sorry, I was back to speed limit.
So, yeah, put that on next planning commission agenda, and then it can go to the board after that?
In the November meeting.
Correct, those are public hearings.
Yeah, cause that will need a public hearing, so I'll need to notice it. So.
Okay.
On the November.
Because it's.
An ordinance change.
All right, we're gonna need one too for signal parking signs on, in the metal, so to add those.
Yep.
To our ordinance books, so that'd be a good time to do both. Uh, any other questions, and then I will go back to reviewing the minutes from September seventh?
Very good.
Are we all ready for the minutes? Or anybody have any questions for Chuck or Bob? So, review the minutes from September seventh. Good work.
Yep.
And uh, by the way, the village board did approve of the process of planning commission to be the zoning administrator as well, so that's all. So before, say like, in the minutes, I preferred, came to us last meeting. Um, they'll have to follow all the conditional use permits of.
Conditions of it.
Conditions of it, yeah.
And then uh, and then we sign off on it basically before the, the building inspector would give us a certificate of occupancy.
So we're not gonna get all of them up there at one time?
Just those of us that can.
That can, or?
Just one person constitute enough?
It doesn't have to be everybody. One, two, three, four.
But should it be stated, a date is set, and if two or more can attend that date, it's good to go?
We then, I would assume we can make it however we like.
I think you, I think also, though, if there's ever a time where a form of the plan commission is there, we would want to make sure that it's.
A legal posting.
Yes.
Oh.
Yes.
So we'll get something in then from writing when it's complete, and then we will set a date to go and have a possible forum where one or more people can.
That might be a question for Paul, if you guys are just there looking at it and not discussing, then you may not need to, we could just put out a blanket, notice that. A form of the plan commission may be present at various times, as long as no discussion's taking place, but that might be something we want around by Paul.
I agree.
So no discussions, meaning no discussions of the issue we're looking at?
Right, that doesn't.
Yeah, we got the.
Right, there were no discussions of any outside business other than what we're looking at.
And then also then be prepared that people might show up while you are there also, cause if you post it, what where you're gonna be and, and when, it's, it's technically a meeting, right?
Meeting, yeah.
So then there should be all the meeting things, minutes, and if there's a forum.
And if we have less than a forum, so if.
Well, then maybe we just make it easier to make it.
Three people, three people.
Yes, three, two or three people, so they have that, have it set, the first two or three, they reply, yes.
Sign off on who's gonna do it, the pictures, report back to the rest of the committee.
And then we bypass all that problem, right?
Yeah, I, I think it may be a good idea for us to get, and by us, I mean the plan commission, to get a plan in place. Because there's things in the ordinance that talks about the zoning administrator's role and what they're the keepers of, and there's all that stuff. So I think it would be advantageous for this group to have that discussion of what the ordinance currently says, and the procedures that you guys are going to have in place. So that it's clear, so that we don't get any kickback from community as you guys are going through and, and doing that role, that it's just clear and cut. That everyone knows what the proper procedure is gonna be.
Yeah.
A- agree, cause I already got emailed saying that from the building inspector, saying, no, that's the zoning administrator's responsibility to write citations. No, it's not, here's, and I, I, did I email all you guys on that, or I think I sent you to send out to.
Shortly, shortly after our last meeting, right?
Very, and even last week, I sent a bunch of stuff out.
I think it's sent to me, it would just be best practice to have clear understanding of what.
What we're.
What, yes, the role and the expectations, not only for you guys, but for us staff here, and for the community, cause all of a sudden, if they get a citation, but. They've never gotten a citation before, or whatever, they might say, well, what's the process? And if we have to sit here in our hands of a same vibe, I don't really know, and that's not super helpful in the community.
The way I understood, if what we were going to do was, the zoning administrator was make sure the conditions that, that we put in place, that actually got followed up on, that had some, you know. That we had some teeth into it.
Yep.
Before the building inspector gave them the notice of occupancy.
Yeah, we were just gonna go up there with the CUP that has one, two, three, four, five, what they have to meet.
Yep.
And then we're just gonna write yes, 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 or no.
We'll have to work on.
Yeah, we probably don't wanna get too far in the weeds on process right now, just that it's not an agenda item, but.
Yeah, it needs to go on to what, it needs to be more discussion after that's an agenda item.
Yeah.
Correct.
At a later date.
Correct, and so we put that on the, like, on the agenda too, and send out to everybody what the current zoning administrator duties are, so we can. Everybody has an idea, and we can discuss, and hopefully we take some action on the, we know who that is. The zoning administrator?
Us.
Oh, we are. We just became zoning administrators at the last village board meeting.
Okay.
Makes sense.
So, so to save any legals on the forum, forum and stuff, we should set it up so that two to three people, as you were saying, lean. I mean, can you draft that up, draft something up for us?
Well, let, let's find out from those, the village attorney first, if it's like a field trip like that, if we have to, what our options are, and then we'll, we'll go from there at the next meeting.
And then the next, uh, November meeting is when we start detailing just how it'll be.
Tanger will send something out to Paul, asking like, hey, this is what they're looking to do, if they go do a field trip, to make the, make sure that the conditions are in place, that the planning commission set forth. Before the building inspector gives a certificate of occupancy, does it, does it have to be posted?
Yeah.
Cause they have a process of, you know, and it, it's, having it posted's no big deal, and, and putting that there may be a forum in place, big deal. And if we all wanna go and check it out, we should probably all have that opportunity to do so.
So talk amongst yourselves about it, so.
Right.
Posting meeting.
Right. Uh, anybody uh, wanna make a motion for the minutes, receive the minutes?
I'll make a motion for the minutes, probably September seventh.
There's a second.
Oh, second motion?
Any discussion? Any note on the favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Hi.
Opposed? Anybody wanna make a final motion?
Motion to adjourn.
A second?
A second.
Any discussion, are you none, all favor?
Hi.
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 The meeting, it ends at seven eleven P M, thank you guys.